I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Melissa, will you please swear as your new member?
Jared Lawson.
Okay.
Raise your right hand.
Okay.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as a member of the Board of Education of Hicksville Exempt Village School District, Clions County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office until your successor is elected and qualified.
I do.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Carrier.
Here.
Iden.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Mazur.
Yes.
And Wonderly.
Here.
Five to zero. I'm electioneering for 2018. Do I have a nomination for president for 2018?
I nominate Jen Carrier.
And I second the nomination. Any other nominations? Roll call, please.
Carrier.
Yes.
Iden.
Yes.
Jones.
Upstaged.
Mazur.
Yes.
And Wonderly.
Yes.
Motion carried for yes votes. Do we have a nomination for vice president for 2018?
I nominate Jen Carrier.
I will second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to have Jen Carrier be the vice president for 2018. Roll call, please.
Carrier. Iden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mazur.
Yes.
And Wonderly.
Yes.
Four yes votes, one extension. Motion carried. Okay, we need to appoint a legislative liaison to the OSBA conference for 2018.
Nominate last year.
I did it here before, it's not a big deal. You just go to this one meeting and it's all the conference.
So I'll try to the second part.
So you're nominating yourself?
Can I?
I'll second that.
Okay. All right.
So who are putting down move by who on that? I don't know if you can nominate yourself.
I don't know.
We'll make our.
Yeah, we'll just make do you and then second it. I'll second it. Okay. It'll just be that whole adverness. Okay. So Craig has moved and stepped seconded. Thank you to appoint Jen to be the legislative liaison to OSBA. Roll call, please.
Carrier. Iden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mazur.
Yes.
And Wonderly.
Yes.
Four yes votes, one extension, so Jen will be the legislative liaison. We need to appoint a student achievement liaison. I did. Yeah, now there haven't been any meetings this fall. I mean, I haven't been to any. Haven't been notified of any.
We were on the email list.
I think I might have somehow gotten back on the email list.
I hope.
Because I wasn't for a while and then I sort of.
I know that we're kind of going to re-shuffle through your middle school, high school. Like this upcoming meeting, it's middle school and high school. So that might be why you're not on that list. So I'll look at the list of the full meetings with all the staff and see who do I need to add now.
Well, is there anybody else who would like to do that? I could do that because I'm available, but if anybody else would like to.
I think you should do it.
I'll move.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that Ben deserves a student achievement liaison this year. Roll call, please.
Carrier.
Yes.
Iden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Upstaged.
I don't want to take that's good.
Mazur.
Yes.
And Wonderly.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed for with one extension.
So Jen?
Minda.
So I want to.
Is that on the list?
Yes. Okay, we need to appoint an athletic council representative. All right, it's been moved and seconded that Steph would serve as the athletic council representative for this year. Roll call, please.
Carrier.
Yes.
Iden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mazur.
Upstaged.
And Wonderly.
Yes.
Motion carried for with one extension. So Steph will do that, thank you. Okay, we need to appoint a tax incentive review committee representative.
That's easy, Keith.
It's loads of fun.
So Craig, did you move?
I think Minda did and I'm seconding.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that Keith will serve as our tax incentive review committee representative for this year. Roll call, please.
Carrier.
Yes.
Iden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mazur.
Yes.
And Wonderly.
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Thanks, Keith. Appoint a Ford County Board of Education representative from 2018 to 2020. Is that right? It is, Benny, but are those the right years? I thought he only served one year, but last year. Am I not right?
Well, that's what we were just talking about, it was a three-year. I thought it was a two-year.
See, I thought it was three, so if he's done one, wouldn't that be correct?
That's 18, 19. Okay. Yeah, I see, I don't know for sure, but. Unless he re.
I do know he has two more years. That's all I knew, that he had two left. So how many he's done prior to this, I have no idea, but.
So we're assuming that 2020 is each end. Okay.
End of the school year or end of the. Or it'd be end of the calendar year.
Calendar.
Yeah.
So what's January 20th?
Which would be correct. Yep, that is correct. I would agree.
Okay. So who would like to move that?
I'll move.
Okay, Jen, thank you. Seconded.
I'll second.
Okay, thanks, Jen. It's been moved and seconded that Dennis Vetter will serve as our Ford County Board of Education representative. The law has changed, but it does not have to be a board member. Now, if it's a community business person. Yes. Roll call, please.
Carrier.
Yes.
Iden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mazur.
Yes.
And Wonderly.
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Thank you to Benny for being able to serve our community at Ford County that way. Okay, we need to establish a regular meeting date, time, and place for the year 2018. We have been seconded Monday at 6:00 PM.
Let me ask you this, are you happy with the date? Or should we look at alternatives? I don't necessarily know there's many alternatives available, but I know part of your concern was trying to get financials in order for
Right.
this quick, in the month.
It can be, it can be a little crazy at times. I mean, it's, when it ends on like, okay, like say this month, it ended on the first. Well, we were then closed on the first then too. So it can be, if things don't hit and things don't balance. But I think the analysis is really hard that, you know, then it's trying to bust everything down and things that you want to look at. Sometimes it's kind of like, here you go. You know, and the analysis really isn't there because you're just trying to get the financials out the door. But there's not a lot of looking at it to see exactly where things are. It can take some time. So it'd be easier if it was pushed back, but I don't know. The third Monday would be the most ideal. But I don't know how that works out with everything else.
And I had emailed. And you, Bill, we're going to bring you in on this.
As it stands currently, I had, I only have one student volunteer who is able to drive. And he unfortunately has got a job now that he's not going to be available. Aside from that, the alternatives are, I do have members of village council who are able to operate the camera in my absence. So I could always inform them that unless I can come up with a volunteer, every, I will be there for the first Monday council meeting. And that they would have to operate the camera on the third Monday if I can't find somebody to fill in for me. And then the other alternative would be that I could also train one of you to turn the camera on. I would prefer to have somebody actually operate the camera rather than just turn it on and just leave it in a fixed shot. Because it's, first off, kind of boring and secondly, you know, when people are doing presentations and moving around and so forth. But it might be a bit challenging at times, however, if that is the decision that you would like to make, then we'll do what I have to do. And we'll figure something out to be able to accommodate the board.
But you have two camera sets that you could.
Yes, yes, I have, there's, there's a camera that is just at the village council office, or the council chamber, that is there all the time. So, you know, that's, because we're there every, the first and third, that's, that's a standard setup. We have the equipment over there, so I would be able to, I would be able to have the cameras set up here if one of you were to run the camera. Or like I said, if not, I would just run over to the council room, get everything all set up for them, ready to go. And then like I said, both Mayor Collins and Mike Barth are familiar with the, you know, how to operate it. And because council is, is a different sort of thing, that can be done with just a static camera. Because they're all sitting there and they don't get up and move around and have presentations or so forth, so. So we could, we could work something out, I'm sure. And then there's always the opportunity to, for somebody to step up as volunteer. Continually trying to get student volunteers interested. I'm not going to lie, village council meetings and the school board meetings, not the most exciting things for kids to want to get assigned to.
We're shocked.
But, but still, I'll continue to work on it. But the main thing is that if that is what you decide to do, we'll make it work.
Yes, it does, I hadn't thought of that.
So are we stuck on staying on Mondays? I mean, is there any flexibility to go on the other day of the week? I know.
That was just more sports related.
Then what's your kids, that you're going to do that for?
No, I understand, so yeah, I'm not advocating for that because I know that I don't want to make those changes.
Well, I think the fourth Monday, then you're like a month behind. So, I mean, if we have to keep it at the second, is.
You know, I think an option too, you know, each month if you look at it tight, we always have the option of changing that one month. I mean, just because we picked that doesn't mean we can't change it. We've done that several times before. So maybe it would be better just to leave it at the second because I would want Eric to be.
I do too, yeah.
Yeah, I hadn't thought of that.
So just leave it at the second.
Okay, do I have a motion for that?
I'll move.
Okay, Craig, thank you. Seconded. It's been moved and seconded that we would keep the meeting on the second Monday of the month at 6 o'clock PM here in the committee room. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
I just want to say, thanks, Bill, for being flexible.
Yep.
Yes.
And just for what it's worth, if you were to look at another day of the week, I know religious considerations aside, Wednesday would be absolutely ideal because there's absolutely no other conflicts on a Wednesday evening. Nobody else does any, there's no sports or anything else, so.
All right, yes, thanks, Bill.
Wednesday's a one night only, you're home at 6 o'clock, that's nice.
Roll call, please.
Carrier.
Yes.
Iden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mazur.
Yes.
And Wonderly.
Okay, the motion carried, five to zero. All right, adoption of the following standard authorizations. Authorize the treasurer to secure advances from the auditor when funds are available and payable to the school district. Authorize the treasurer to invest any inactive funds at the most productive interest rate. Authorize the treasurer to pay all bills within the limits of the appropriation resolution and make appropriation modifications as needed. Authorize the superintendent to employ such temporary personnel as is needed for emergency situations. Authorize the superintendent to serve as purchasing agent for the school district. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Steph, thank you, seconded.
I'll second.
Thanks, Jen. Any discussion of those? Okay, roll call, please.
Carrier.
Yes.
Iden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mazur.
Yes.
And Wonderly.
Yes.
Voted five to zero to adopt standard authorizations. Okay, I have a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting.
I'll move.
Okay. Seconded.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, so it's 6:06. It's been moved that we adjourn this meeting until the next regular meeting, which we held about one minute.
6:07.
Today. Roll call, please.
Carrier.
Yes.
Iden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mazur.
Yes.
And Wonderly.
Yes.
Okay. It's unanimous that the organizational meeting is adjourned. It's 6:07. And I'll call this regular meeting of the Hicksville Exempt Village Board of Education to order. Roll call, please.
Carrier.
Yes.
Iden.
Yes.
Jones.
Here.
Mazur.
Here.
All members are still present. We don't have any visitors. My technology reporter, Matt.
Thanks, Matt, for coming in.
Yes.
No problem. I can't complain, it's my first time this year. The way everything's hit for the meetings, we had a lot of other things going on. But, sorry, Mr. Hunter, you can yell at me. But Mr. Farrell has commissioned, I don't know, many, you know Travis Lysit. Student, former Hicksville student, now in college. It's Donna Lysit's son. To produce a video for promotion of our STEAM program. Since you guys really want to hear me talk, this is good. Hit go. If you have any questions, hopefully, Mr.
Our STEAM program offers the students a very unique classroom experience. It's hands-on learning with 21st century skills. In our STEM program, students are getting the opportunity to do things with robots, coding. They have the opportunity to work with Design CAD. All programs and all things that will become very valuable to them as they work towards their future goals. Our STEM program has been entirely funded by grants as well as community donations. No monies have actually come from our general fund here at school. And I think that's an important fact and an important piece to making this program work for us. And it also goes to show the importance that community members see in this program as they're willing to donate money for something that they find very valuable, which we also find valuable.
I'm the STEAM teacher at Hicksville Middle School, and we've created a project that we've entitled Beyond Boundaries. And Beyond Boundaries is a curricular project that's designed to foster student creativity and really fosters their passion for learning. We've developed a classroom environment that helps with creativity. You know, it seems like with all of the standardization that we have today in education, that students aren't given an opportunity to be as creative as they should. So, you know, the pendulum has swung to a standardized approach to education. We're trying to find balance in that and swing the pendulum back toward creativity. So students have the opportunity to come into the classroom and to develop projects that they're passionate about and that they enjoy doing. Creativity can't be taught, but it can be killed. So here at Hicksville Schools, we're trying to create an environment for our students where they can be self-motivated and creative. Our curriculum is set up in five different modules, so when kids come into the classroom, they're going to be learning about three-dimensional design, CAD. They'll be learning about computer programming as well as robotics and electronics.
Libraries have always provided access to all. So in addition to STEM materials and maker space materials being available during class time in a single classroom with a single teacher, by housing things in the library, students and teachers from many classes and many age levels will have access to the materials all day, every day, when the library is open. We continue to evolve as we go into the 21st century and providing different types of materials and resources. Libraries aren't just print books anymore. We have digital materials and equipment and now scientific materials to creative equipment through the maker space. We have students use the maker space materials for other projects as well. We have students that have created things with the 3D pens and the 3D printer to incorporate into projects. We've had students build things with the Legos for the projects. In fact, right now, we have Roman Arch that some seventh grade boys created for a history project on display here in the library.
I think the STEAM, I think in general, that it was really beneficial because it exposes us to coding and science, technology, engineering, art, and math. And it will expose us to that and that, and, which is a thing we're going to need when we get out into the real world and have to like fill those jobs in the modern world. When I did the STEAM, like the course, I still felt really motivated to do like really well in the class. And it was a pass fail, so as long as he told us right at the beginning that as long as you don't like, aren't like disrupting the class, you're going to pass. But I still felt motivated to do like really well at the class. Because like when you have a project that involves arts and creativity, like if something fails, like you want to try it again, like to get it right. So like when we first failed with our Autobot, like we tried again and again till we got it to where we wanted it.
So what I think is most valuable about the STEM program is learning to do actual stuff with your hands. Because a lot of these classes, it's you're going in and you got to learn math or being in language arts, and it's all mental skills, really. You have to remember it. And with STEM, you're going in there and you're learning how to actually do stuff. Now, after STEM, I'm actually interested in working with programming or DoIno board, which is basically just this big, huge software motherboard that you get to program from scratch. And STEM really opened that up because before I looked at the, I'm like, ah, coding, programming, ah, what's going to happen? I'm going to break something. And then you go in and you learn in code.org, it's so simple and so easy. It's like, I can do this. Like every day you get these new challenges to do, and it just works. And I go from nearly crashing a server to programming this robot to do justice in something only I know how to do.
Not too shabby for our first draft. It's very good. So that's been the major focus this, so far this half of the school year. I know we had a great day when they came out. We had people from the community, people from other schools. And Mr. Farrell recently, it was last Friday, I think it was last Friday, he went up to CK Technologies in Montpelier. And watched, that's literally like a mile from my house where I live. I got a friend of mine, he's one of the engineers there, and he was able to tour their factory. And they create a lot of auto, or not auto-lodder parks, large semi-truck, plastic parts and things of that nature. Many of the skills we're talking about are in here directly applied. So it's very cool. It's very, very exciting for me to watch all this stuff, be able to be a part and supporter. Mr. Hunter, I don't know if you want to put any more into it other than we'll see what we can do about it. Get a little softer picture at the beginning.
I don't know whether he gets one that's better than that. You know, no, again, having everybody come tour was a great opportunity for us to kind of show off what we've done. We kind of talked about that last board meeting. But one thing since then even, I bet I've received 10 phone calls from schools who were there. And most, what's been most interesting is, it's not even about our STEM program anymore. It's, I can't believe how good your kids were. I can't believe how, how well spoken they were when they got in front of everybody else and were able to just present a way. And we can't believe like some of the, they talk about the pictures, now, how do you guys do it? We want to come in and we want to see what you guys are doing. We want, can we just talk to you for half an hour and pick your brain? Sure, here we go again. But it's a great, it's a great thing though to, that a lot of different schools and a lot of different communities are, not just the STEM program, but are seeing kind of what we're doing here and how great the kids we have, so it's a special thing.
That was an awesome video. That was like top wall reading, like I would have expected to see that.
My sixth grade daughter watched it, she go, he's not a professional. I said, no, honey, he goes to college. I don't really think this is his major that he's working in, but it's, it's a very, very good video.
Yeah.
It is exciting. It makes me just feel so proud of all of you guys. It's awesome. I know it doesn't come without a ton of work, so thank you for everybody that's involved. It's awesome.
That's, that's the thing, it's crazy is, you know, we hear from these other, I apologize, I've been sick. We hear from these other districts, other individuals from districts talking about how they're chasing us, how do you do this? Why, how do you do that? Or how, where's the funding come from? Or how do you get the teachers or kids to do this? It's a, it's a very dedicated group of educators that are willing to go above and beyond. And you have to have the right people here to do that because unfortunately, you know, some of the other schools, those challenges are themselves. You know, and we have some of those challenges here, you know, we know that. But we've got enough teachers here that are willing to go that extra mile, put in that extra effort to make it a great place for our kids to learn. I agree, that video looks amazing. I mean, it looks like a professional video, it does. So again, another thing that has everybody chasing us again, so it's awesome.
I know we plan on putting that, especially on the base, our school website and then our Facebook and our Twitter pages as well. Ways to get that out there for people to see.
Principal reports. I guess you go first.
Can I go first?
Sure.
Good, that sounds awesome. Of course, you know, Christmas break and everything, and I've been sick the last week and a half. There has been a whole lot to report on when it comes to the academic side of being in the building, so we can help so much. But I do want to remind everyone that, thanks to the community for their participation in Real Money Real World. That was completed this second week in December. Mrs. Leone always calls out to our community, to the businessmen and women, and they always come in and assist us with that. I want to congratulate our choir and our band performances that were conducted December 15. I want to congratulate our varsity boys and our varsity girls basketball programs for the Route 49 Classic Championships. Of course, those of you that follow the program know that the boys program and the girls both were four-peat champions. That's never been done before by a boys or girls team. And for Hicksville to do it, these seniors, I mean, that's a pretty proud moment for them, boys and girls. So congratulations to the coaches and the players. Christmas break, of course, was from Friday, December 22 to Tuesday, January 2. And then last week, we had three two-hour delay days. And of course, no school today, so it's kind of been hard to get it going again. But we're definitely looking forward to finishing up the second quarter because again, the second quarter ends this Friday, January 12. And we'll be moving into the second semester. Prior to break, we were working on remediation tests for our seniors. And those are focused on like the math and the LA portions of the end-of-course assessments for graduation for the class of 2018. This week, we will continue that. We will work on our government tests. We have a handful of kids that are looking to improve those scores in government, to get them on the right track for graduation. And again, it's just a handful, and they should be successful. We're not too worried about getting them what they need, and of course, again, to graduate. Monday, January 15, we have a full-day teacher in service. There will be no students at the school on Monday, January 15. The second round of teacher evaluations will begin over the next couple of weeks. And we're pretty excited about that because, you know, we're all halfway done. Our goal is to always have this completed prior to testing, but once testing comes around, it's just crazy. We do not have time to do that, so it's two months, we're very busy. And then of course, you know, speaking of testing, I know K-12, all the different end-of-course assessments that we'll be taking. You know, we've been preparing all year long, building into our curriculum, building into our daily activities. But, you know, as we get closer and closer, we start to really, you know, focus a little bit more on the individual test prep for students that we know that are kind of on that baseline score, just above or just below. And of course, as a whole, everyone, we're looking to prepare them for their best possible outcome. So it'll be a busy next couple of months preparing all these kids and then the teacher being involved in that preparation. And of course, the schedules that will be changing, starting in March and April, during the five-week test window. I know it's three, four months away, but to us, it's right around the corner. And there's a lot of manpower involved and that time spent on that. So I wish everyone the best of luck in here, and I'm sure we'll do a great job and our kids will be ready and they'll do their best.
Thanks, Jeff. Iden.
I'll try not to double up on anything. Again, choir and band concert though was a tremendous, December 15. We got everybody ready for the holiday season, I want to thank them. Was able to attend my first sixth-grade camp in December. It was really neat. It was a great opportunity to check out hands-on experiences for kids. I wasn't quite sure what to expect with the whole sixth-grade camp outside winter. It was very neat, and the kids were really getting into sixth-grade camp. There's a lot of opportunities for kids to do things that they really wouldn't get a chance to do otherwise. So it was special to get to see that. Proud to say that we had zero picky waste, which I found out was a big thing. So. Basically, our kids liked all their food that week, so that was good for us. Last Friday night, we had our first junior high dance of the school year. Nice little, little dance going on. 127th and eighth-grade students came, which was a pretty good turnout for that crew. So pretty proud to see that, and kids dancing, they played pretty well. We started our gifting testing last week. Because of some of the two-hour delays, we weren't able to finish round one. We have one more section of round one to finish up, and then we will start with round two, January 11th, January 12th. uh, that's to identify kids that are gifted in certain subject areas, uh, called the Iowa Test. Upcoming events, the fourth quarter, or the second quarter does end January twelfth, uh, so we have one week here to finish grades and get those, uh, hopefully up as high as possible. We also have our student of the quarter luncheon Friday, January twelfth, uh, I just love that event, I think it's a great way to, uh, recognize some of the hard work some of our kids are, are doing. Um, Friday, January nineteenth, I talked about schools wanting to come and see what we're doing here, Swanton is actually gonna come and visit us, uh, January nineteenth, uh, they wanna see the House Assembly, they wanna see, uh, what we're doing with the Hixville Initiative, so they actually, Swantonville School, who was here for our STEM, our STEAM Day, uh, enjoyed it so much, they asked me to come back and check out a few other things, so I said, we're more than willing to, to have them. Uh, Tuesday, January twenty-third, we're gonna have our Defiance County Spelling Bee, uh, so good luck to Emily Harvin, Adam Crawford, Jacob Heavens, and Jocelyn McClish, they will all be competing at Ayresville that night, and, thanks for the next board meeting, February eleventh, eighth, the eleventh, uh, we are taking, uh, last year's Hixville Shake winner, the Hixville Shake, uh, runner-up to RCA, uh, where they're gonna compete in the national RCA competition, which will be an interesting, uh, measurement stick, to see kind of where we're at compared to a lot of other schools and a lot of other places, so we're excited about that.
And just to add to that, I think, Andy, didn't the county decide they're gonna do a county one?
Yeah, we meet this, we meet this week, um, we're kind of building it, uh, trying to decide exactly what it's gonna look like, but, basically, I think everyone in the counties of Fairview is currently doing the shake, different grade levels, so, we kind of come together, you know, we're using a lot of the same resources, a lot of the same people, a lot of the same, uh, so we said, let's do a Defiance County Shake, uh, so we're actually gonna be doing that this year, uh, I believe it's end of May, it'll be after ours, so actually, we will not crown a champion at Hixville until, we will, we'll end up in the top five, and our top five will then go compete in the Defiance County competition, and then whoever places the highest there will be our champion, and I, I didn't wanna pick someone and then, you know, your fourth or fifth place at Hixville, good luck in the county competition, I didn't think that was fair to him, so, we aren't gonna pick one until, we'll end up top five, we're gonna take them, um, to, it's actually a Defiance College taking place, and then, in the future, the goal is that only one school in the county will send someone, that'll be the chi, that'll be the prize, all the schools will work together and raise the money to send one school and one champion to RCA, so that's something that we're looking to do in the future, versus, there's two or three of us that are sending kids to RCA this year, and we just said, if two or three of us are doing it, let's do a Defiance County, let's pick one, and we'll send that kid on instead of our, our county thing, so, um, I'm excited about that, and we continue to work towards that.
Thanks. First one?
Um, actually, I wasn't here at the last board meeting, cuz I was at RCA, um, with our new staff members, and, um, it was just really nice to confirm that we are doing a lot of great things here, um, I was still exhausted when I went back to our room, oh nice, from everything that goes on there, um, but it was just, it was a, it was just, it was really neat because they did it a little differently, so the four of us, we were all these in different groups, so you would, you would, you'd see, you know, Mr. Kate Hagan over here jumping up and down with his house, and, and Mr. Olson over here, and it was just a lot of excitement, a lot of fun. Um, our fall third grade testing scores came back the Monday prior to Christmas break, um, last, the scores have changed a little bit, um, last year, students had to earn both a seven-hundred and a forty-four reading score to be both proficient and to be promoted to fourth grade. This year, they changed it, um, where students still need to earn a seven-hundred to be proficient, but they can earn a six-seventy-two to be promoted, um, so the score has lowered a little bit. Um, last year was the first year that we did have two fourth grades, well, we only had one fourth grade student, um, or one third grade student that did not meet that promotion score, so we have been doing intense reading intervention, um, and then, um, we did find out maybe late September, early October, that we had a move-in student, um, that also did not pass his third grade guarantee at his school, but that school did not provide us that information until pretty late into it, um, but both students were move-ins, um, and, um, the one that came this year, um, did pass it, um, and our other fourth grade child, um, is, he missed it at one point, but, um, he's in the process of some testing and stuff as well. But, uh, last year, um, we put all of the students on REMs, and I think I, I talked about what a rep is, it's about an intervention, um, like putting every student on some type of intervention, so if they don't pass that third grade, um, reading test the first time, our grade card does not get deemed. Um, this year, we did not do it that way, this year, what we decided to do, um, as a third grade group, and myself, we, we used all data, so we took anybody that scored in yellow and red, and we placed them on a rep, and unfortunately, we had four students, um, I don't know if it was a bad testing day, you know, they didn't go well that morning, and they just didn't do well because they were total surprises that they didn't meet that, um, six-seventy-two, so there are four students that we're gonna have to put on a rep now, we've already got them in title services, and got them working for that, um, test in the spring, but, um, you're always gonna have those little surprises. We also are starting our gifted testing for second grade, it's second and sixth grade this year that are testing for gifted, ours, um, starts tomorrow, uh, COGAT Iowa, the COGAT is a three-day assessment that tests their cognitive ability in the Iowa, we're gonna be testing in reading and math area, so.
Going on the email today? All right, thank you. I don't think we probably have a board counting.
You didn't touch on me.
Okay, so we don't have one tonight. Superintendent's report.
Sure, I checked, uh, with the other superintendents in the county regarding the establishment of a finance committee to see if other ones, uh, do that, so far, I've only heard back from one, uh, that was Ayresville, they do have a finance committee, and there are two board members that sit on that committee, as well as some community members, um, and so, I'll get more information from Don on kind of how they structure that, what it is that they discuss, what they're looking for each month, so I'll work with Don a little bit on that to try to, uh, get some stuff put together as we start our finance committee, and then hopefully, hear back from the others as well, if they have anything. Um, I also, um, tentatively have a date set for our fall open house, uh, we've been in the building ten years, uh, this month, and so, um, as you guys have requested to have an open house, I think that's a great idea, we talked about the next fall, we actually talked about October, November, but I picked the second week in September, and my reasoning for that, if you guys are okay with that, is the building's gonna be all cleaned up over the summer, ready to go, it's gonna look at its best, and I, uh, I thought that, uh, you know, the second week of September will be a good time, so if you all are good with that, I tentatively have that date set there for that open house, that'd be on a Sunday after Labor Day. And then, uh, today, our closing was the second one of the year, so we're actually doing quite well compared to other schools, and hopefully, the rest of the week's gonna be okay, but I've talked in some fog now, um, we'll see what happens on that, but, uh, I also wanted to mention, to make sure that you, did you get my update on Friday, and the, the bus fleet, we, that was a, yeah, it was a big concern on Wednesday when we had, um, we had no spares left, and I felt uncomfortable sending the buses out with the windshield what it was, uh, kind of backup. Schmitz are awesome, and Jake Timbrook is awesome, he came down before the buses ever left and started working to get one going, and we had the school van heating up out here as well, which put me a little more at ease, but before they, you know, it wasn't, they weren't out shortly, or too long, and we had another bus fired up and going, but, uh, you know, that goes back again to the discussion we've had multiple times about the age of our bus fleet, and not that new buses couldn't start either, it was a really cold morning, but to have all of them, three of them, not start on that day was not a good thing.
I, I assume these are all plugged in, they have block heaters?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay, and where are we at on the grant, the twenty thousand dollar grant?
But we have heard from the, I haven't, when is the?
So we applied for the grant, now we're just waiting for the?
Yeah, but we were only eligible to apply.
One, yeah.
Yeah.
And what was in the budget for this two thousand and eighteen school year, was it?
We didn't.
So there any buses in there for that?
By your forecast, we did put two buses.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So it is in the budget for this next year?
Originally, we wanted to do a lease for four.
We had talked about this.
Yeah, we talked about doing a lease for four years, and then you pay like one bus each year, rather than one bus every other year, but.
I did away with that when we, when our.
Definitely.
So the.
So we do have one bus in there.
And is it at full price, I would assume, or is it?
I had put it in, yeah, because I think when we did our five-year forecast, we didn't know anything about it, so.
And what cycle are we on with that? Are we on like every X amount of years, we have it?
We should've bought a bus, actually, I think.
Our oldest bus, I think, is twenty?
Is old.
Twenty-three years.
I mean, but do we have some kind of like every three years, four years?
Every other year is, I think, what is what was in the past, and then, we were going to, we actually talked to Cardinal Bus last spring, um, about, you know, possibilities of how we could, you know, go ahead.
Yeah, we wanted to jump in and do like get four, do a lease for four, and get, we'd get all four of them at once, and then if you do a lease and pay one a year for four years, which is what I was hoping to do, that kind of gets us up to date. Our whole fleet is old, uh, you know, not the whole fleet, but a lot of it is extremely old, and, uh, you know, we've had a lot of discussions about the amount of money we've spent on repairs, well, that's gonna come with an older, uh, vehicle, so, in fact, one of them, uh, needs, it's a mechanical thing, so, in an engine, so, I might hold on, but it needs something, yeah, it needs, uh, fuel injectors, I think, I'm not sure what, but, uh, I was talking to Eric about it, and they, they said, do you want us to get fixed, you know, you're thinking about trading one in, you know, they wouldn't recommend fixing it, it doesn't work, and I'm like, well, yeah, we need to fix that, because we don't, there's no guarantee that we're gonna get one, first of all, and, you know, we have to have spares when things, when they don't start, so, it's a four thousand dollar fix that we're gonna have to put into a bus that potentially, if we did four new ones, or, you know, did some new ones, it would probably be one that we traded in, but you can't be without.
Right, we can only kick the team down for so long, you know, and I mean, at least we're.
I think we should seriously talk about it, or think about it this spring, when we see how the whole.
Budget.
Budget plays out for the year, and then I think we should seriously think about doing that lease, or, you know, so I, it'd be like budgeting a bus, one a year for four years.
But, but we were, I think we were on it every other year, purchasing a bus, I just can't remember if this year was the year we were, that we were supposed to, or if it was last, this whole year, I can't remember.
I'm just supposed to remember, cuz we also have the VN replacement.
Right, so I, I can't remember how that went, but I do have it budgeted for this year.
I didn't remember last year, but.
I couldn't remember, yeah.
I can find that out for sure.
So, that grant, that twenty thousand dollar grant, do we know if it's gonna be?
We just haven't heard anything.
But I mean, do we know if they're gonna do it other following years, or is it just a one-time thing, or?
I, yeah, I had no idea, yeah, it was the first time I heard of it.
That'd be interesting to know if, if they were.
Well, can I just get one?
Yeah.
Maybe, it was an EPA thing, so, it probably depends on however EPA funding is, if they have like a, you know, sir plus, or, you know, whatever the federal government decides is probably how they determine whether or not the eligibility is there or not, so.
And, that's, that's it, with us being gone, and stuff, there's not much to, thank you.
The newsletter, the.
The newsletter?
Yeah, that was really good.
That, that, well, anybody can sign up for that, so it is public, yeah, yeah, thank you, Jim, appreciate that.
Just educate, explain like the rights and all that.
Yeah, well, we have, we have, uh, we only had one person complaining about, uh, delaying, but, uh, that's okay, you'll have that, it's not their call, it's my call, and I felt it was the right call to make for the district, and I stand behind it a hundred percent.
You had a lot more complaints than you did delaying.
You're right about that, so, thank you.
All right, moving on to consent agenda, are there any items that needed to be removed? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the following consent agenda?
Oh.
Okay, Jim, and Steph, thank you, roll call please.
Eric, yes, Hayden, Joan.
Yes.
Maser.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Minutes and financials, do I have a motion to approve those? Steph, thank you, second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Greg.
All right, um, just a few things that I have on my update, um, as you can see on the treasure update, we did have a credit card compromised again, that wasn't a good thing, um, happened to have a teacher come in saying that they had some emails that was bouncing into them, and we were able to get those canceled, somehow they were up in, around the Toledo area, Toledo and Holland, where, is where somebody was trying to pick up some iPads, so, we got that taken care of, and the cards been canceled, and they did reissue that.
How, how does that?
How did it happen?
And how, does that, does that happen a lot in other schools, how, are you, how do we?
I have no idea, I, all I can say is like the, the card that we had initially, like here a few months ago, the only thing I can think of is that it was used at a taxi, I, I'm not saying that that was it, but, I know that they had taken that card when they went for the Power School Conference, not Vegas, so I don't know if.
That the one?
That was the one, the first time, now, this is a totally different card, and it was something to do with Walmart had been hacked or something, so, it was probably around, you know, Christmas time, and the hackers go crazy, so, we just happened to have, yeah, and luckily, he checked his email that morning and found that, you know, he had some things popping through, and we were able to cancel it, we called the, both of the Walmarts and said, these are not ours, do not get them out, so everything was basically taken care of like that, so I'm not exactly sure, I mean, I don't have an answer, I just think hackers can go crazy, so, um, I don't know about that one. Um, I did turn and put in here just a little FYI for the Medicaid, uh, our Medicaid payments, we've only actually received two up until this point, um, the second one that we received was in December twenty-first, um, they've kind of slowed down, we have used, um, something called Central Ohio Medical Review, I don't know if you guys remember that at all, where, um, there was an issue, I wanna say like a year or two ago, where, there was an issue with the way Medicaid was being collected, and there was referrals that were needed, so we were using the COMR to issue referrals for kids that, you know, they were on IEPs and that type of thing, the, the federal government had made some adjustments, and I think the state was a little behind the eight ball in getting us information we didn't know, so, you know, they created this Central Medical Review, and that's kind of how, they basically kind of got us up and going that first year, now, the state was, I don't know what the state was doing, they didn't make the necessary modifications to their system, um, the way that that correspondence reads, and so, we just, we do have Liz Perna and Julie Clavina that they do internal like referrals for us, and those are the ones that we're not getting back, the second payment, which has been really slow coming in, but the second payment that we received in, in December was for OT and PT, but it was, didn't include the speech, so, as of right now, Keith and Liz and I kind of spoke one day, and we're like, well, we'll continue to do what we're doing, as of right now, if you read the memo, it does say that, um, we'll eventually get our money from Medicaid, hopefully, but it's just, when is the timing going to be, but if we don't see anything coming in a little quicker by January, I think we'll turn and contact COMR and say, you know, can you start doing the referrals for us, because they're getting referrals, they're getting the money to come in quicker than what the internal staff referrals are going, so.
I had something written down in June of this year, with the Central Ohio, and I had this twenty-five dollars per file, twenty-two hundred dollars, we had to pay eight hundred eighty upfront, was that something you just talked about? I thought we actually did that.
We did do some of that, so they do do some work for us, I think, they were still kind of doing some, I can't remember exactly what all they were doing at that time, if it was.
So I thought, well, maybe that was a back, maybe we were paying them, but it said you had to pay eight hundred and eighty dollars upfront, which made me think.
We did.
It was like an ongoing.
I thought they were doing all of our Medicaid.
They're not doing all of it.
Part.
They're doing, like Julie, basically, if we don't use them, then we're not paying them, so when Julie and Liz are doing the referrals for us, those are, those are things that we don't have to pay for, they're doing them in-house for us, so we're saving a little bit of money by using Liz and Julie, but there are some things that COMR does do for us, um, and I would have to give more clarification on that, but I think they're helping us with like the OT and the PT, those type of referrals, if need be, so, but, kind of where it stands is right now is that we just need to, um, I don't know, we're just gonna kind of hold and set, and see what happens, and see if more Medicaid payments start coming in, but I think this was something that HPC was, they were. But I think this was something that HPC was, they were obviously concerned about, send out the correspondence to us to let us know that, kind of what's going on, so. We also had a little hiccup, I guess, with the, the new phone system lease. We had received, Jeff Schaper and I had received a call back in, I want to say like October or November, in which they were kind of concerned about, well, they only got a third of the payment for the new phone system and, and we had had a conference call with them saying, well, that was kind of the agreement. You know, it was going to be, that was our portion of what we had been paying, the E S C for our phone system. And they're like, well, we're not a finance company and we've given you, you know, the products and that type of thing. So they had basically told us that it was a misunderstanding and we needed to get a lease of some sort. So we have, they were able to locate us someplace called, what is it?
Well, the lease did again.
It was, but they, yeah, it was going to be spread out over three years and we thought that Microman was kind of, you know what I mean? Like we were just going to pay a third of the bill, a third of the bill, a third of the bill and.
Nothing was there. I mean, that, that seems hard to believe. I mean, not that I don't believe you, but I mean, it just seems hard to think that they're going to come put everything in over a verbal that we're going to pay in three payments? Didn't we request something in writing to say, there's a finance charge, there's an early termination charge? I mean, it just seems odd. I mean, I would not break my bills that way and I, I don't understand how that could have, I guess, been held that way.
We had all sat in a meeting with the representatives from Microman. Do you remember that?
I don't remember the discussion.
You don't remember? I do remember there being a discussion. There was a bunch of us in there. I think it was you and me and Jeff Schaper. And the guy was like, yeah, it's not a problem. If we need to break it up into three separate payments, it's not a problem.
Was that not, I mean, we must have signed a contract of some sort, right? I mean, was that not spelled out in a contract or lease or?
I don't think, because when they billed us, they billed us in full and Jeff Schaper approved it at a third. So when I had talked to Jeff, I had said the same thing. I said, we did? That was the agreement, right? Like we sat in a meeting, this is the way it was understood. And the guy was like, well, there was never a lease done. And I said, well, we just kind of, I think we assumed that setting in that meeting and the guy saying, yes, everything is going to be done that way, that was our understanding as to how that was supposed to be completed. Because Jeff, I think, was kind of taken back too, so.
We don't have a purchase agreement for it? My head is in May 2017. I thought it was a great thing.
I think it was a purchase agreement, but I think they were under the understanding, like we were going to pay it all upfront and we were under the.
Purchase agreement, take a look at that.
At least double check it.
Mrs. Tobe, if I may, I think the sales department in their company and the billing department in their company didn't talk. Because that was, that was in that meeting. That's exactly what the sales.
Because he said it's not.
Three payment stories. And I think when he went back, he said, got the deal. And now suddenly it's all coming back on the backside saying.
Yeah, but I think that's our, I mean, to me, that's on us. I mean, that's, we should have gotten something in writing. We should have. Because I do remember talking about the three payments because we'd had a discussion on interest rate.
I think when.
And now we're going to be paying 6.52% on, because we would have probably had the discussion, maybe now we should have the discussion. We paid it in full, not paid that. You know, I think that should be the discussion now. The remaining amount that we owe is what, 13 and? We paid 14, so we owe 16,000 two more times?
Right.
And what, if we pay that with their interest rate, what's that going to be?
That is what the payment would be with this.
So basically, it's going to cost us 2,000 and 2,000 and, okay. Yeah, yeah.
Because I think when we, the, the agreement that we had bought, he, he did say that there wasn't going to be a problem with, with the billing like that. So when the invoice came in, I mean, we made the purchase order out for the first, for the first of three payments.
And what does everybody think? I mean, are, are we better off paying it or paying the interest? I mean, I don't know what you guys think. I mean, I, I know we're not talking huge sum of money, but I mean, we're, we're talking $4,000, so, I mean. This is, this is the way I, I always kind of look at it is, you know, how is this going to affect year five of the five-year forecast? We either take the money out this year and next year and the money's the same at the five years. So maybe we're better off just paying it now, saving the four grand, because in five years, you're going to have, you know, 4,000 more than what you would have now. But, I mean, I guess I, I'm just curious what everybody else thinks on that.
We've already paid the first installment. The second installment might be due until September 18th and then the next.
One more month and I'll, I'll get back with you next time.
Okay.
Yeah, because we can always, you know, maybe what we can do is pay one of them for the next third now and then wait until July.
Pay the other.
And pay the other third out in July, which would be next year's, you know, it wouldn't suck us quite as much, but it would shorten our interest a whole lot.
Let me do that, I hear.
Pull that agreement and see, you know, I'll get, we'll have more information on that next month for you. Okay, word for me?
Thanks. Okay.
I did receive a call and I want to say it was probably like last Thursday or Friday from Linda Magg of the State Auditor's Office. She was basically requesting that we waive our audit due to their backlog. They are, I think that they have had a lot of things going on at the state level with audits and that type of thing. My understanding from Linda Magg was that they've been pulled in some different directions and that they had to, I think they've pushed some things back. It's not really why, I know I reluctantly said, oh, what am I going to do? Our hands are tied at the state. The state says they don't have time for us. I mean, what do we do and how do we do that? I did turn around and she said that she would hope that we, they would be in then in the fall, like this September. But she couldn't promise that because she is actually going to retire herself. I personally, and I told Linda Magg this on the phone, I said, I personally don't like that idea because I would rather be audited every year. Even though we're, we are not, we're not required to because we fall under the federal threshold of $750,000 in federal funding. We don't, we don't have to. We might save ourselves a little bit of money, but I would prefer that we, I would prefer that we be audited because it's always nice to know if you're, if you're not doing something that the auditors like or, you know, that you, they tell you now instead of wait two years and then be audited.
I agree.
Yeah, Melissa, talk to me about it. I, I don't like the idea. I mean, they leave them out every year since I've been. It's just something that's expected. I hate it when they come because they, they take over that area up there for more than a month, but.
It's nice to know.
I just, is there other, other people that do it or just them?
Well, and I turned around and I did contact someone from the auditor's office then today and did inquire about, you know, how does this work? And, and are we technically off the books or are you still going to come or, you know, what are things looking like and what's our options? And basically from the lady that I spoke with, and you know, Deb Mac, she'd been in our office, like she audited us last year. She had said that we're still technically on their books, like she saw, like we are still there. She said, if you went out and got an independent audit and got a contract with them, you don't know how far back they're going to push you back. She said, but I could contact Linda Magg probably, you know, tomorrow and be like, look, we don't, board wants to still have an audit. We just need to know when you'll be here and that type of thing. She said, if we farm you out, it'll probably be for five years. So what she means by farming us out is that we would have to turn around and have like an independent audit from like, and, I mean, I know like at Patrick Henry, I think we had Julian and Groo. I don't know, somebody may have mentioned to me that maybe Stire, is it Stire or Deviance might do some work like that. But I don't know and I'd have to get some clarification though too, as to whether or not, if you would decide to go with an independent audit, does the state have to approve that if you make that kind of decision? But I know like they are, they are really backlogged at the state auditor's office. But as, as far as I know, is that right now, we're kind of tentatively still in their, in their loop of being in an audit. But she was acting like, she was trying to figure out who would not need an audit because we don't, we are not technically required to have one this year. But is it my, I don't know. I would really prefer that we would.
I, I personally would like to see it settled. And I, we talked about it, you know, I thought, well, you know what, because I know how expensive they are. But, but you know what, when it comes to, when they're going to do two years, they're not going to charge us for one year. They're going to charge us probably for both years, you know. I, I think we should have it. To me, it's, it's, I, I think it's our responsibility, you know, that number one is board members because it protects us and, and the taxpayers. And you know what, if the state pushes it down later in the year, you know, so we, we can't control that. But you know what, if, if somebody, you know, if there's an issue somewhere down the line or if somebody questions us, it's like, you know what, we're doing the best we can. We're working with what we got. The state's holding us up. I, I say we stay in the loop and say, you know, well, we want an audit and, you know, if it's late, it's late.
Right.
You know, it's out of our hands.
The one thing I think is a big concern for me is the whole licensure piece. I don't want it to be like two years down the road and they come in and, and say, oh, well, you've been doing this wrong and. Licensure is a big deal and, and I think that, and I don't know if that's been their focus because she kind of alluded to there being some issues that, in other facilities that, and I don't want to say fraud, but I think that there was some, some potential issues. So I don't want to get stuck in that little.
I agree. I, as soon as I read that, I agree. I would like to see an audit. So what are we, at the board deciding here? Are we going to say, okay, the state has how many months? I mean, at what point are we going to say, oh, the state's pushing us back too long? Let's see if I can think of something that's.
If we don't have one done before May, then we didn't have one this year.
So more likely it's not, I mean, even if they farm it out, will it be before May?
I don't know if we would get farmed out if it, if we could even get on anybody's books yet this fiscal year. So I'm, I can call Linda Magg in the morning and kind of tell her that, you know, the board is preferring that we have it done and just ask her, you know, when does she think that we, that she, that we're off.
I'd like to push the issue a little bit more instead of just being like, oh, okay.
And I, and I didn't go, oh, okay. I was like, I'd really rather not. You know, I said, I, you know, I just feel as if it's an important thing and, and, but I said, I don't, you know what I mean? What do you do if the state is saying they don't have time? I just kind of, I told her the same thing. I said, I don't know what to say. I said, I think that's what we need to look at.
If the state, if the state said, you know, they don't have time, that's not acceptable. They have time for everything else. I'm not buying it. I'm, that doesn't make it happen. They make everything else happen. I don't know. I just want, Melissa talked to me about it.
No, yeah, and I wasn't.
She knew I didn't like the idea either.
Right.
Well, that's a frustrating question though because we're expected as educators to jump to what the state says and then they should.
Set of rules.
We, we're going to push back testing. It's not working for us initially.
We're going to push back until, you know, September.
I'll, I'll try that, Jen. That's how I go. All right.
So.
So we would like for you to contact them again and tell them we would like to.
Yeah, and I did put a bug in, or in Deb Mac's ear already today, so. I did turn and give you a copy of the letter that we had sent to O D E. That has, I did get a, a verbal or I guess an email confirmation from Dorothy Petinkowski from O D E saying that they did accept that. And we'll be receiving a formal acceptance probably by the end of January.
She, Dorothy, I don't know if that name rings a bell to anybody, in her stead in particular, but she was treasurer at the U S C for a long time. Former.
Right.
She was going to retire. Now she's looking at the state.
She did retire and now she's. So, other than that, I think the only other thing that I just wanted to kind of maybe touch base on was, I did turn around and put some, together some numbers. I don't know if anybody had any questions on the graphs or anything that was put into the treasures update.
I loved your explanations of the numbers of all graphs so we could see which one was which. That's very good, thanks.
So I think for the most part, everything is probably about the same as what it was the previous month, but.
How much do we collect from Medicaid every year? Was it?
I want to say it's like, I want to say it's more than that. I, I want to say, I want to say it might have been like, probably closer to 40.
Okay.
So, I mean, it is a little chunk of change.
Yeah.
So, you know, we need to do everything that we can to make sure that we're collecting what we're supposed to be collecting. But I don't want it to be pushed back so far that we don't get those collections this fiscal year. I mean, they're obviously very helpful and very beneficial and, and help bolster our costs.
Did that, you, you don't know, but did that number go up when we hired Liz?
That I don't know.
Okay, I was just curious if that. I, like you said, I, I always thought it was around 20,000 we were collecting, which, you know, I mean, if we're collecting 40 now, I mean, kind of helps to, I don't know, I don't want to say justify position because a ton of other things justify your position, but it can, you know, it helps.
Right. I can try to go back and kind of look at the numbers.
You don't have, it's okay. I was just curious if you.
Okay, yeah, I have, yeah, I went. So does anybody have any questions then?
Are we talking about cafeteria?
Oh, the cafeteria.
Oh, the cafeteria.
It kind of is sometimes. Basically, in looking at the cafeteria budget, we are, like basically from fiscal year 13, we have been, if you're looking at the numbers, we have been deficit spending since fiscal year 13. It's just kind of each year we, we spend more than what we're bringing in. I think there's a lot of reasons for that. I think, I do think that, in the memo that I had kind of given you guys, I think we're doing a good job at, at the food portion of it and keeping costs. I mean, they're pretty much the same as what they were back in fiscal year 13 for actual food supplies. Basically where the majority of the cost is, where it is probably everything is payroll and benefits. We had, you know, payroll for them goes up just like everybody else in the increments. What I mean by increments is like whatever the teachers' percentage increases is what their base increases. So it's going up in that way. Benefits are the same way. We've also had, I think, an individual that went from a, she went from not being qualifying for insurance to qualifying for insurance and then also picking it, picking it up. So, you know, that was a little bit of a, not that we're not happy to provide it, but, you know, that, that's just an extra cost that the cafeteria has to afford.
So how are we absorbing that? Because we're up 4,000, sorry, down 4,000 or more.
Am I original or was it?
In a fair view to Nora, where are they at? I've spoken to these other schools.
I think if you're looking, if you're comparing apples to apples and you want to compare us to other schools, the only one that I, because I've talked to a couple of people and asked them, you know, when I was at Patrick Henry, we were deficit spending in the cafeteria generally for the same reasons, payroll and benefits. Speaking to a couple of other treasurers there in the same boat, the only one that was, that does have a surplus is probably Montpelier and I think they themselves now are starting to go the, the other way. They're now starting to spend more than what they're, what they're bringing in. I don't think it's, we're no different than probably a lot of the other entities across the state. I think it's something that, I don't know if it is, I think our cafeteria does a great job of providing our kids with a great meal. I eat down there quite a bit myself. You know, they, they give different options and I think she tries to change up the menu. It's just, I know that we did hire, I think we hired some individuals, maybe like in fiscal year 15 or 16. I think it was in here. I think we had some students that were helping in the cafeteria with washing dishes and that type of thing. But then we hired somebody because the students, and I don't know what the reason was that the students were no longer assisting in the cafeteria. If that was.
Time, I think that's an issue.
Anyways. But I mean, that's, that's a, that's a payroll expense right there. She doesn't, I don't think she takes any benefits. We also have an employee right now that's off on sick leave, so, you know, we have increased sub-cost.
November, your financial summer, November 2017, we were at negative 8,191.31. Now we're at 12.
Now we're at 12, right?
And one month. So, I mean, we can't keep going this way. I mean, we don't, I know we talked about last week, we were going to talk to Brittany. Have we, what are we going to move?
With the time being off, she wasn't here. I did speak to her myself this week and she's confused as well because she's selling more breakfast than she has in the past. And she's not understanding why we're deficit spending either. And when I think back to the past, we were one of the schools around, one of, about the only schools around that was operating in black. So something isn't quite right.
How much is our meal compared to other schools? I mean, are we, is it pretty? How much is our meal compared to other schools? I mean, are we, is it pretty even? I mean.
We have, I don't.
The, the cost of the meal, we charge what, 205? Or what is a meal?
Well, with the commodities and stuff, yeah, I mean, she has that, yeah.
But I mean, it's, but like, you know, Fairview and Defiance, I mean, are the meal prices similar? Because I remember, you know, just what, I don't know the last time we raised the prices.
We do it every year. Usually 10 cents. Because I think the, I think the federal government says you can only raise it so much each year. You can't, you know what I mean? You can't go and raise it like a dollar. I think it's like a 10 cent thing.
And I know, talking about this, it reminds me, you remember how Denny was always saying that, of course, county was always having this issue too, and how they started doing better and then all of a sudden this year they're, they're back down again. So I don't know if it's, it's a cost of the food itself mixed with.
I know that Ruth Ann is doing a really good job of using the commodity program. It's like a state bid program. She's doing, she's doing a really good job. I mean, our commodities are going up. The cost of the commodities are going up, the cost of the food, normal food supplies are going down. So I know she's trying to utilize that commodities as much as she possibly can. If you look at the food costs in fiscal year 13 and compare it to fiscal year 18, I mean, I think she was actually like maybe a couple hundred dollars less this, this year than what she was at the same point in fiscal year 13. So I don't think her food costs are going up astronomically.
Really with, with.
It's the, it's the number of employees and the benefits that we're paying out. That's the biggest chunk of it. I don't know if.
Well, even the food and related supplies and material weren't as going. I mean, from the reports that you were sending us.
I think when we had, remember when we had talked on the phone and I said, if you look at, if you look at it, it's not, the food cost, commodities are going up, the food, the actual food supplies appear to be going down. If you add those together, the total of the, are about the same as what they were in fiscal year 18. The major, the bulk of what the problem is, is staff and benefits. I mean, I don't know if you look at, you know, what did everybody do? You know, how lean can you be? I don't know how lean they can be.
She's not overstaffed.
I don't know if she's overstaffed.
Yeah.
When we had students though, somebody from the kitchen, they kind of rotated who came out and kind of worked in that area of the kitchen. But now we hired two people in that area.
That's a lot of money right there.
Those, you know, those two people we did not used to have.
About here two years, I think.
Yeah, because I think.
Amazing, like our meeting balance for several years has declined.
We have to rectify ourselves whether we're taking money from somewhere else to, you know, to put, I mean, we cannot just keep operating.
We haven't had the chance to sit down with her. I spoke with her just this last week, our first week back and said, hey, we need to meet. We've got to get some answers and figure out. So we haven't let the break. We just, it didn't happen. So we'll by next
Okay, any other discussion, questions about the budgets? Okay, roll call to approve the minutes and treasures.
Did you say roll call?
Yes, roll call please.
Carrier.
Yes.
Iden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
And Wonderly.
The motion passes five to zero to approve the minutes and treasures report. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the employment of the certified staff?
Okay.
Okay, Jen and Steph, thank you. All right, recommend to approve Macy Weatherhead as a certified substitute for the 2017, 2018 school year. Recommend to approve a $650 stipend to AJ Fawzing for coordinating an upcoming eighth grade field trip to Washington DC. Any discussion?
Just for our discussion, I just thought of this, our discussion last one. So are we going to, how are we going to remember to remember that for the next year? So you want me?
When Anita pulls up next January's, it's automatically on the, on the year before.
The males? All right, roll call please.
Carrier.
Yes.
Iden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
And Wonderly.
Yes.
Pass five to zero to approve the certified staff employment. Do I have a motion for employing classified staff?
I'll move.
Okay, thanks, Karen.
I'll say.
Thanks, Craig. It's been moved and seconded to recommend to approve Cindy Rosebrook as a classified substitute for the 2017, 2018 school year. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Carrier.
Yes.
Iden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
And Wonderly.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero for classified staff employment. Do I have a motion to approve services and agreements?
So.
Next step.
Awesome.
Jen, thank you. Recommend to approve an auction sale agreement between Hicksville Exempted Village Schools and Bruce Guilford Real Estate and auctioneering for the following on April 7, 2018. Part of lot number 267 and part of lot number 278. Recommend to approve the revision to the Ohio Revised Code 3313.845 service agreement for the 2017, 2018 school year between Hicksville Exempted Village Schools and Northwest Ohio Educational Service Center for Therapy Services. Recommend to approve an intent to move forward with the construction of a solar field by Energy Optimizers USA. Recommend to approve the annual OSBA membership dues from January 2018 to December 2018. Recommend to approve the annual OSBA briefcase electronic copy subscription. Recommend to approve the annual school management news electronic copy subscription. Recommend to approve the OSBA legal assistance fund consultant service membership from January 1, 2018 to December 31, 2018. Recommend to approve the annual virtual transportation supervisor subscription.
That's what we've had already, right Keith? If you like it.
Okay, because that was a trial last year. That was my question too. Okay, any other discussion?
It was like $200, I think.
Just for clarification, what were the therapy services by the Ohio Educational Service Center?
I think that's something that Homer had sent. That was the one that he sent the email on.
Well, I, and I read that. I didn't necessarily understand what he was saying in that.
I think it's something that they, I could be, let me just see if I can find this email.
So it's to revise, revise code language.
So I believe what this is, is that they had to, they had to make a modification when they had their last audit done. Do you remember that email I sent you?
Who's doing, who's doing the auditing?
Uh.
That's Mary. It's me. We're a little bit, we're a little bit more resources.
There was something that they changed. I was trying to see if.
I know.
And that is what, that is what that is for is because they, he's just basically marrying something that they've done in the past. It wasn't like a change in any, I mean, it is a change, but it's not.
What kind of therapy services are we talking about to begin with?
I'm sorry, because of therapy, education, that's going, well, speech for the preschool could wait to have our own speech.
So it sounds like this is just cleaning up some wording for them.
It's just a, yeah, it's just kind of like a cleanup.
It's what it sounds like to me.
It's about as clear as possible.
I didn't call Homer to talk to him about it.
I think I sent it to you, right? I sent you.
You have to find it.
Hey, sweetie, it's not costing us any more money. We're not signing them for additional services. So I don't do.
I think it's just kind of a technicality. It's something that he had in a previous audit and he was just, I think what he said was Dorothy Petrikowski had done it prior to him and it's just kind of like a little cleanup thing that they have to do for the ESC audit.
And the one for Energy Optimizers is just to move forward repairing the contracts so that our lawyers can look at that. Okay?
That's the next step.
For the solar field. Okay. Any other discussion? All right, roll call please.
Carrier.
Yes.
Iden.
Jones.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
And Wonderly.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero to approve the services and agreements. A motion to approve the other business.
I'll move.
Thanks, Karen. Recommend to approve the new or revised Board of Education bylaws and policies. 2271, college credit plus program. 4120.05, employment of substitute educational aides. 5136, personal communication devices. 5136.01, electronic equipment. 5200, attendance. 5330, use of medications. 5530, drug prevention. 6233, amenities for participants at meetings and/or other occasions. 6680, recognition. 7300, disposition of real property and personal property. 7540.03, student technology acceptable use and safety. 7540.04, staff technology acceptable use and safety. 7540.05, district issued staff email account. 7540.06, district issued student email account. 8600.04, bus driver certification. 9141, business advisory council. Recommend to approve a resolution stating that the board has approved the following annual events on which public funds are expended for meals, refreshments, and amenities. Christmas gifts, end of school year luncheon, parent teacher conferences, senior citizens and volunteer appreciation banquet, teacher appreciation luncheon, teacher in-service workdays, Veterans Day assembly. Recommend to approve the following community members to be on a newly formed finance committee. John McCullough, Dennis Better. Any discussion?
I just want to say that the, on the bottom of page five, those things that are listed as kind of a working list, so to speak, and John Kaler, our annual representative, said that we should approve those every year. And like this year, if we spend general fund money on something else that would fit underneath that list, we need to just add it on the following year.
I was going to say it's kind of a, you know, sets top.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think it, I, I'm reading, I mean, I have to go back and read the policies again. But I think it also goes along with the six to two year three amenities for participants at meetings and/or other occasions. Just kind of cover your basis list.
Okay, in the policies, 91 and 41, about the business advisory council. Okay, in reading through that, it says that the board must meet on this every year and file something by the end of March, even if the ESC is the person we approve for that. So it says we have to, we have to file a plan for matters that this council's going to discuss about the economy and the job market. We have to meet at least quarterly with the board. You have to file a yearly report. And then there's this little slash, well, you have to file a yearly report with ODE by March 1. And then there was this little catchall that said, even if you have the ESC do this job for you, the board still must meet on this once a year. So I just, I thought we need to make sure we're doing that.
I wonder if that has to go with the career advising piece and the compliance piece and the safe account, but I just did, actually just did it today, where we have to, the minutes from the board where we approve the career advising piece.
Okay, so that might be, we need to double check.
That's, that's what I was, I was covering in my discussion. Is that what, or is that what your question?
That's my question.
Is that where they can be partnership piece and knowing what skills are necessary, whether it's soft skills or hard skills to help our community and invest our community through, over teaching our kids in school. And us being such a rural area, I think the ESC kind of takes a legal and that kind of, of course, county does for a lot of our career technical, because we don't have like manpower to individually schools to do that. So if I'm guessing, that's probably our small, small part as a district, dealing with the ESC and completing that task.
So I just want to make sure by this March 1 deadline that we've done whatever that policy says we have to do. So that's policy 9141.
I want to check with John to make sure we have that.
Okay.
Follow the.
Okay. Any other discussion about those? Okay. Roll call please.
Carrier.
Yes.
Iden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
And Wonderly.
Yes.
Approved business items are approved five to zero.
Is that more than yours?
Yeah. We have a motion to approve a community member for the finance committee.
I'll move.
Thanks, Craig.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jen. Recommend to approve the following community member to be on a newly formed finance committee. Michael Mather. Any discussion?
He's out of, what is it, out of certuring?
Yeah.
Post, he's post out right now.
Roll call please.
Carrier.
Yes.
Iden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mather.
Epstein.
And Wonderly.
Yes.
The motion, Carrier, four to zero with one extension.
Question. So who on the board?
Okay.
And then I talked about this.
When I, when I went through, I looked through the sunshine law and sunshine law is going to apply to this committee because it's to any citizens advisory committee that's appointed by the board. So we will do the sunshine law thing. But I do need two people to volunteer to serve on that committee for this year.
I do.
Okay. Thank you, Craig.
I appreciate it.
Okay. So that committee will consist of John McCullough, Dennis Better, Michael Mather from the community, and Craig and Jen from the board. And they will report back to us when we have a meeting.
And I was reading in our annual policy today, we need to advertise or.
Post.
Always the meeting.
We're going to have a meeting.
Such a wonderful.
So Craig or Jen, one of you two going to go kind of organize the first meeting?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. If you're okay with that. I kind of had some thoughts in place. I tried to talk to Keith and Melissa.
And Keith can get some ideas from other finance board, you know, finance committees if they, that would be a good place to start.
The three of us to get, get together. Whenever you want, just let me know. Send me an email or a text and.
Sure. Do you have to make a recommendation of approving this?
I don't know, do I?
Actually, I think it's okay to approve them here, but it actually can be appointed by the president.
All right. So I would like to appoint Craig Iden and Jen Carrier to be the board representatives for next year's, for this 2018's finance committee. So if the two of you will work with Keith to form an agenda and then meet with them when we work, that would be great.
That's good.
All right. Any old business? I had one. As I was looking back through the last minutes, we talked about in the track, handicap accessibility and restaurants. We're going to be coming up to track season again. And I just wondered what our provisions or plans were for that.
I think just the same, having the quarter pots that were made that accessible. I think that's what we decided.
Yes. They brought down four additional quarter bodies. One of them was made that accessible. That way we did not have to utilize the rotor affiliate and that kind of, I mean, I know it's a temporary solution, but it works for now because the investment, the amount of money into that to put in actual rail presto is everything was going to be horrible way.
Was there some talk also about some kind of railings going up the steps? I kind of, it seems like maybe.
Yeah, there was. In fact, I had just had that list in my hand today when we did that tour. Also the long-term, short-term, midterm items that I've talked about. And I didn't, I just had it today, but I didn't have time to pull it together. But some of the things, you've got to check off that list, which was kind of nice to see that. you've got checked off that list, which was kind of nice to see that that's been a couple of years, I think, that we looked at that, so.
So who would we check with, does anybody need that, or?
Jeff Haught.
Yeah, and, and speaking of facilities, um, I met with Mr. Shaver, or Mr. Haught, Mr. Overmeyer, a lot of month ago, and he kind of wanted me to mention to the board, you know, this spring, this upcoming summer, fall, as you go to events, whether at home or away, pay attention to the facilities we're attending and going to, you're going to start to notice that, you know, our gymnasium is one of the best in Northwest Ohio, but when you start talking about our baseball, softball fields, and football fields, and what's going on around them, and how they are, we're falling way behind a lot of other districts, including just, just in our conference, and we're talking defense, even that, you know, dugout's not as big a deal, I mean, throw some paint on there, uh, but there, there are some deficits to improve that we talked about a couple of years ago, that we're going to have to really start considering and investing in.
All defensive, all fields.
But it's weird, because we don't own it, you know, neither one.
No, that's, that's not true.
The baseball field is.
The baseball field is, but the football field is the school, right?
Yeah, the football field is hard to be, I was referring to the baseball.
Football field and the track.
And the track belonged to us, and then baseball, softball, baseball, and the softball is technically more under the Metro Park than it is our.
Fight now.
We take care of it, yes.
Yeah, well, that's what, you know, because you had mentioned the, the baseball, softball, that's what, I mean, it's kind of weird.
And we just do some things to the softball field, I think, if I remember correctly.
And we almost, yeah.
Which we should, I agree.
Yeah, the school almost always partners up with the park board, and we need to.
Maybe we are.
When we did the facilities tour, uh, you know, what we talked about, what we've already kind of taken care of, and what we talked about.
Yeah, you bet, at that point, yeah.
I think to have that looking at us would be good, as a reminder.
Okay.
And then we, we, we do the sets, we do it like every three months, the first one, we do.
Work session.
Okay, we did it November, December, January, February, so we should probably plan in February.
Yeah, February or March.
Okay, so anyone do that at the February meeting?
What do you guys want to do, February or March? I mean.
We just do a work session for an hour or so after.
Happens at the board meeting.
I think really good.
Just to talk through things.
Good times, or come work at that place.
Yeah, well, I want to make that one of the, yeah, I.
Okay.
So that's the February meeting?
Following the February meeting, then.
So he wants somebody to answer it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And, you know, that works good because, uh, you know, it's nice to have the administrators here for those workshops, and sorry, thanks for coming in today, too, by the way.
Yes.
But, uh, you weren't part of one, and Columbus, obviously, and it is nice to have them here.
I agree.
And, and I, I, you know, we talked about doing it more often, like we're talking about here every three months, and making it shorter, so it's not really going to length on a meeting that much, I mean, we're about done here, so fairly early tonight, tonight.
So, I mean, what if we all send you one item as opposed to, you know, since we're going to be more often, I mean.
What do you think of?
What do you think?
Because sometimes what your item is, somebody else has also.
We would send two items, and maybe we just.
I would do that.
You know, say, you know, whatever your top thing.
That's okay, just send two.
Send two?
Just send two.
Yes, and a couple of people might be in the same place.
Yeah.
That's fine. Okay, anything else? All right, we do need a motion to go into executive session, we will be discussing item number one. Is there any motion?
I'll move.
Okay. Karen, second name.